So it's always good to get started. My name is Joe Griffiths. I'm the one who's been bothering you with emails the past few weeks in the both original and follow-up emails. I'm the local assistance and training manager for the Maryland Department of Planning. I'm also the primary liaison with my colleague Kristin Humphrey to the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. This is an MPCA event and we will have an MPCA, well, we have an MPCA board member now, Teresa Pico. Well, everybody's going to be introducing themselves here in a second, but I know the introductions say Danny Winborn's going to introduce, but he's running late. He'll be said he'll be about 30 minutes late, so I'm going to take over, but he will, he'll have a moment later to share a little bit about where he comes from, what he thinks, you know, why he's in the, why he's the leader of the MPCA. But I know or recognize a number of faces in here. Some people were at, I remember you, Bryant, Ms. Bryant Ward, right? You're at the MPCA conference that we had in Frederick in the fall. And the MPCA is an organization founded in 1983 dedicated to providing support, education, networking to members of planning commissions, planning boards, boards of zoning appeals. It has a much broader audience. I know there are a number of planning staff members in here and we appreciate that and we always want to encourage staff members to attend our events, engage with the MPCA because the citizen planners and professional planners need to work together. So we had a conference in 2018 or 19 called the Vital Partnership that focused on that partnership between citizen planners and professional planners. So if you haven't yet, please make sure you sign up in the back. We have agendas back there, some handouts. I printed out some slide notes. I didn't print out one for everybody because I know not everybody uses them. I didn't want to spend too much paper on those, but there should be still a couple back there if you haven't grabbed one. This is the Southern Maryland Regional Workshop. The MPCA back in 2019 started regional workshops as one of its initiatives in addition to its annual conference. So we did one in Hagerstown in 2019, one in Annapolis in 2019, and then the pandemic hit, so we kind of put a crimp in the regional workshop initiative, but we did do a few online virtual workshops in 2020 and 21. And then we did our, the MPCA did their first in-person workshop last, last summer in Denton. So we're trying to do two, two a year, and I want to thank Janine Harrington and La Plata for hosting. I've been working with Janine and La Plata since I started with the Maryland Department of Planning back in 2017. I don't think the MPCA has been down here for an event before, so not just in La Plata. I'm not even sure about Southern Maryland, so I'm really excited to be here. But enough of that. I've introduced myself. I want to just briefly go around the room, just say your name, your jurisdiction and your role, anything else you want to say, but we don't need to, I'm not going to ask something jokily or funnily, but if you want to add something funny, feel free. We'll start right here. Great, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman for the Town of La Plata, Board Three Planning Commissioner as well for the Town of La Plata. I'm excited.
I'm also like Charles County, but I'm on the Board of Field as one of the board members.
We'll get it right. We'll go, we'll jump up here, sir.
Planning and Growth Management, and I serve as the Site Design and Architectural Review Planner.
Okay, great. When I get to some of the design aspects of my presentation later, I might need your help. Go ahead.
Current planning section, but mostly subdivision review and lead planner for our housing.
Great, thank you.
I'm a planning one with Charles County's PGM. I work with Michael in the current planning. I primarily do EPFO and subdivision review, and I've served as Charles County Clerk to their planning commission for the last four and a half years.
Great, thank you. Jump back here.
Down the boroughs, Charles County Board of Fields.
Great.
I'm the world evidence of the planning division from St. Charles.
Mayor Blake Wallace, Calvert County, and I'm the planning commissioner and administrator of the State Subdivision.
I definitely want to thank Calvert County. Calvert County's always been a great friend of the MPCA, so they always show up. Calvert County always shows up, but I thanks everybody else for showing up as well. Yes, sir. Great, great. You standing in the back? Great, great. To the back. Okay. Thank you. Great, thank you.
Bill Murray, my name is Charles County.
Great, thanks, Bill. Sorry about, you intercepted or? Great, thank you.
I'm planning commission in town of La Plata.
Great, great.
Gregory Sampson, planning commission.
Nice to see you again, Mr. Sampson, and we met a few months ago. And then my colleagues here. Sarah's relatively new to that position. We hired her for something, a project that she's going to tell you a little bit about, but now she's moving over to the Southern Maryland position. So I have some cards and make sure you put your cards in the back too, Sarah, so she'd be your go-to for Southern Maryland to work with the Maryland Department of Planning.
But I also am Principal President and Editor for the Planning, Practice, and Learning Dean New Center, and I'm sure all of you have heard of the initiative. Oh, there you go.
Magical, at least so far, we are still on time. I'm sure that will change, but I'm going to turn it over to Janine Harrington, who's going to share some information about La Plata. And I'm sure all, many of you know Janine, but all of you?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. We are happy to have you all. I see some familiar faces and it's good to see some people I haven't seen in quite a while. So for the Town of La Plata, and I have a clicker, don't I? Do. So for the Town of La Plata today, I'm going to be doing a kind of broad overview about what we're looking at right now, what we're working on, and some issues that we're having and kind of where we're going from there. So right now, we're seeing a lot of development growth potential within the town, a lot of subdivisions, a lot of development proposals, and we want to make sure that we are looking at everything the way we need to with adequate public facilities, maintaining green space, recreational opportunities, and just kind of seeing how we can utilize smart growth initiatives as we develop, and I know Joe will get into that a little bit later. So for right now, we have quite a few plans that are already in place. You know, we just did our comprehensive plan update in 2020. We had an Urban Land Institute TAP study for our sustainable community boundary in 2016, and it's, it's, you know, sometimes the planning part is the easy part. You put stuff on paper, you put it out there, but how do you actually implement it? And that's where we're kind of stuck right now on how to get some of these implemented, how to update our codes, how to get everything working so that we, when we see what's on paper and what's actually being built, it's what our actual vision is. So for our current development overview, I put together a development capacity analysis. This is a very condensed version. The other version is quite large, so I thought I'd kind of summarize it for the purposes of today. I've broken them down into the different categories of plans. So we have our approved final plots, approved major site plans, approved preliminary plots, development that's currently in review, and proposed development. And the proposed development includes annexations that have recently come in, but it also includes people that have come and said, hey, I think I want to build on my property. Can I do that? Yes, you can. So I've just kind of noted some of these, that way we can plan ahead. So as you can see, we have quite a bit of development in place and that's proposed, and that's going to put a, a large demand on our water capacity and our sewer capacity. These are issues that we're currently facing. Water supply is our biggest issue. We have appropriations through the state for 1.234 million gallons per day, and that's it. That's our number. So I know that there's more work that's going on behind the scenes. We're working with Maryland Department of Environment and with Charles County to kind of talk about water supply, water sharing, but as at this point, you know, these are the numbers that we have. And then for sewer, I basically use just a generalized 250 gallons per unit just for planning purposes. Obviously, that's a little high when you look at the individual uses and it could be a little bit different. But as you can see, for total estimated water demand, we're looking at 1.9 million gallons per day, and we only have 1.234. So we're going to have to figure out how to grow our water supply. We do have plans for our wastewater treatment plant, which I'll get into a little bit later. But overall, we're looking at a total of 7,579 plus or minus residential units and a bunch of commercial as well. So it's how do we actually, you know, accommodate this development? The town's growth boundary, right now, as it sits, the town's growth boundary has about 4,584 acres of land. I did exclude the three annexations that were just approved, and I'll go over those in the next slide. This was updated in our 2020 comprehensive plan, and we did work with Charles County Government on this, on this boundary. Eight annexations have been approved since our comp plan was adopted. We had four single lot annexations that were for failing septic. We had one that was existing development and they wanted to be brought in to connect to water and sewer if they were going to redevelop or add any more to their property. Then we had the three greenfield annexations, which I will get to right here. So for the three that we adopted in 2022, we had the Villages of Rosewick, which was zoned a mixed, mixed use for neighborhood, commercial mixed use. It was about 21 acres. The Hub, which was our largest, was zoned traditional development mixed use, and that had 298 acres. And then Hawthorne Yards was also zoned neighborhood, commercial mixed use and had 53 acres. So those were three bigger projects of, you know, land that was added to the town over this last year. So for our statistics, looking at where we might be headed, 2022, we had the census give us an estimate of about 10,404 for our population. So you can see we haven't had too much of an increase since 2010. But if we continue with the development at the rate it is, with everything that was on that previous development capacity analysis, we'd be adding about 20,311 people if you based it off of the average persons per household that's in the census estimates. So what are we going to do about all this? You know, we have all this development that's proposed. Obviously, it can't just happen out of the blue. So for our primary goals, we're looking at reviewing and updating regulations. We have several chapters of our code that are outdated. They need to be looked at, they need to be reviewed and brought up so we can address current day issues. We also, and that's part of, you know, today, is getting education out there. What does the comprehensive plan do? What does a zoning code do? How do we use what we have to affect the development that we have going in on the ground? And adequate public facilities, I think this is across the state, a big issue. Water supply, wastewater treatment plant, transportation improvements, traffic is going up, people are getting frustrated. How do we, you know, work with the community to, to make sure that we can accommodate the growth that's occurring? We also have our Sustainable Community Designation, which we have expanded or hoping to expand. We have submitted that for our five-year renewal. We're also looking at certain software and hardware upgrades, website upgrades, different hardware getting, making sure that we can create good maps, GIS mapping capabilities. We're updating our permitting software. We currently have EnerGov through Tyler Technologies. It's not quite working out the way we thought it would, so we're going to update to Municity, which is an international code council product, and we're just getting started on that development. And then we also have our Keep La Plata Beautiful initiatives. So we were the Tree City USA, we got that designation, and when we got Bird City, we're the first bird city in Maryland. So as I said, kind of goals and action items that are on paper look one way, and then when you actually see things going down in, in real life, when you're looking at the site from the street, it's like, wow, I didn't, I didn't think it was going to look like that. So for our code revisions, there's several chapters that we're kind of focusing on. Subdivision ordinance is a big one. It hasn't been updated since 1992. So a lot of things have changed since then. We don't have expiration dates in place for things that we should have expiration dates for, just across the board. We need to look at it and update that section of code. Streets and sidewalks and wires and sewers are two that we are going to be adopting, the Charles County Standard Details. We want to make sure that interconnecting at future dates is going to be as easy as possible, so we want to make sure that the pipe sizes, different infrastructure types of roads, sidewalks, they're all the same, and that way we can interconnect as we need to. We're also looking to adopt a complete streets ordinance as part of that, just to make sure that we are, making sure that the, the roads and the transportation element have that aspect as well. For our zoning code, we did do a comprehensive update in 2018, but again, you know, and when you put something down on paper and then you come back and somebody actually tries to develop something that hasn't been looked at before, one example is there was an auto body shop down on 301 and they wanted to add on a building. For the zoning code, they needed to add public use space. I don't think anyone's going to walk down from the county building to go eat lunch at AutoZone. I just don't think that's a, you know, so, okay, let's, let's look at our code, let's update those things. We're also looking at updating our landscaping regulations with our Keep La Plata Beautiful Initiatives. We're trying to promote native plantings and setting that precedence. I think Town Hall was actually just certified as a certified wildlife habitat, and we'll get into that a little bit more as well. We're looking at adding a form-based code for our downtown core to promote redevelopment. That's one area that has been stagnant for a very long time, and although we've had those plans going all the way back to 2000, nothing's really generated that area to move forward. And then just kind of reviewing our table of permitted uses, just a kind of broad spectrum to make sure that everything is aligning with our visions with our comp plan. Health and sanitation, adding certified wildlife habitat application processes, so that way we can kind of reduce the amount of code enforcement. If there's tall grass, sometimes it's native grass, and we want that to be present. Obviously, it needs to be safe and it can't be blocking street views and those types of things, but we want to promote wildlife habitat. So we're going to be adding that process, looking at vehicles and traffic, and then the big one is our adequate public facilities ordinance. So for adequate public facilities, we've started drafting this code, and we've talked with our planning commission a couple of times. We're using an outside consultant, Meet and Hunt, to look at the traffic portion. They're also doing traffic reviews for us. Right now, we're utilizing the Charles County APFO when we do need to do a traffic impact study or get that review. So as we move forward, we're going to be using the counties as a guide and really looking at water allocation and capacity, sewer capacity, school seat allocations, just making sure that those are updated and where they need to be. Water supply, as I stated, is our, one of our bigger concerns. Unless we get some kind of water sharing agreement or more appropriations from the state, we have a finite amount of water that we can pull. The town is upgrading our wastewater treatment plant to increase capacity. We have that in our capital improvement plan, so it's a multi-phase project that we can expand and add capacity as the demand increases. So I think the first expansion, tentatively, is going to be ready about April of 2025, and that'll bring us up to 1.75 million gallons per day. We also need to establish expiration date and allocation process for water and sewer. Right now, it's first come, first served. So when I have my development capacity analysis and I have my list of everything that's in review, it's just a long list, and I don't know which ones coming first or, you know, how I'm going to be allocating these or planning for it. So that's something that we really do need to establish and figure out a good process for. We did do a community survey when we did our Sustainable Communities Boundary, and we did get some feedback from the community showing some of our strengths and weaknesses, and I picked out the ones that were really related to adequate public facilities. So strengths, parking ride facility or the Van Gogh bus through Charles County, pedestrian crossing flags, which are going to be getting an upgrade here on Charles Street soon, hopefully, upgrades to our treatment plant, and then collaboration and community involvement. For weaknesses, traffic congestion, lack of sidewalk connections, too much development, aging infrastructure and water supply. I had a couple others that weren't so nice, but I didn't put those on there. Transportation, pedestrian bicycle improvements. We have quite a few projects that are ongoing, and these are collaborations with our traffic consultant, Meet and Hunt. We're doing a shared pedestrian bike path from Rosewood Road connecting into the existing path that'll go all the way down Radio Station Road, connect to 48 La Plata Road, come down Route Six, and then go over to Willow Lane. So that'll be a good connection from Rosewood Road all the way down into our downtown core. Southwest Quadrant Access Management Study is one that has just begun. We're really looking at the southwest quadrant of the town, so that's kind of southwest of 301 and in the Port Tobacco Road, Charles Street area. Washington Avenue Sidewalk Project, I think that's been ongoing for quite a while, collaboration with the county, it's a county road, so we need to make sure that we're working together with the county on that. I know that there are some setbacks and some challenges with the sidewalk and easements and trying to actually bring that in, so, but that is an ongoing thought process that we have. And then Charles Street Improvement Study, this is with collaboration with the Maryland Department of Transportation, SHA. We were awarded a grant to, in order to do some safety and accessibility improvements on Route Six, and we are still working through that with the state right now, but we've done two walks and that they have their consultants doing background data to try to figure out how we can improve Charles Street, since that seems to be one of the biggest issues in town right now. And here's just a outline of what our proposed Sustainable Community Boundary includes with our update. We tried to expand it to include some neighborhoods that could use some assistance. This will allow us to get technical assistance, grants, different funding opportunities through the Department of Housing and Economic, or Community Development. So that's something that we're just waiting on the official approval for, and then we can figure out how we can move forward to assist those neighborhoods and to get some upgrades. For Bird City, as I mentioned, we're the first bird city in the town or in the state. We're trying to maintain and grow habitats for birds and other wildlife. You'll notice if you go outside that we have set up some bird feeders. We're trying to provide education and resources for the community. We're looking at creating a bird-friendly pocket park in our downtown on somebody else's property, so it's really nice of them to work with us. And then reviewing our lighting regulations. So that's one thing that we're, you know, dark nighttime skies, those different things will help birds, so we're trying to review those regulations as well. And then fun fact, the purple marten is now recognized as the official town bird. Tree City Initiatives, we just worked with the Alliance for the Chesapeake Bay and the Davie Resource Group to do a tree inventory. So the map that's on the left-hand side of the screen kind of shows the percentage of canopy by parcel, and we're trying to figure out how we can identify percentage goals town-wide. How much forest are we trying to maintain, identify priority planting areas, and then kind of make sure that we're enforcing our forest conservation regulations. You know, a lot of people will try to just do off-site or pay fee and low, but we really want to try to keep forest conservation onsite. We created planting recommendations, which are on our website, kind of giving a rule for native planting. We have a La Planta project coming soon, which hopefully the community will get involved with, trying to get people to plant trees on their private land, and then updating our landscaping requirements with the zoning code, as I mentioned before. And then the Sweet Bay Magnolia is recognized as the official town tree. So how are we going to get there? How are we going to put all these things together? How are we going to make sure that we're getting our adequate public facilities where they need to be as part of our review process? Collaboration is key. We depend a lot on the county and on the state to work through a lot of these issues. We need to start utilizing grant opportunities and those nonprofits that are available to us, grants, in order to do some of these initiatives. Using Tri-County Council, they've been of huge help, and I know that they're working on some regional studies. And then also just advocating and working with private businesses, our local business association, make sure that we're getting input, and that ties into community engagement. For a long time, we haven't had a, a big turnout with community engagement, so how can we encourage volunteers? How can we make planning efforts accessible, working with different communities, homeowners associations? And education, this is the big one, and this is where Joe is going to get into a little bit into the, the deeper weeds on how all these things work together. And it's difficult sometimes to explain to the public, community residents what the comprehensive plan is, what it does, what the zoning code is, what it does, how they tie together, how, you know, how can we update our codes to align with smart growth more? What is affordable housing? It's a, you know, a taboo word sometimes. I get a lot of the, I don't want that in my backyard. It's, it's not necessarily what, what the community thinks it is. Looking at our zoning review process and how it works and making sure that people understand that we're not just bulldozing things through, that we're following a process. And then planning it, looking towards the future, again, what changes need to be made, looking at staffing needs. We're a little understaffed right now, so it's, you know, going to be important to get some more staff in here, and then really making sure that we're tracking our comprehensive goals and action item progress. I think in the past, it was a document that was adopted and then it was stuck on a shelf, and now I think it's important that we go through and check off the boxes. Okay, we've done this. What do we still need to do? And kind of put those two together, and then really look at promoting flexibility and smart growth, and I think that'll help with our downtown redevelopment area. And that's what I have today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. None. Stand into silence. I don't remember what it's called. I know that it was quite a bit of money to do the design, but if I get your information, I can certainly let you know. Okay. Yes.
What you've been working on or talking with MDE and the county on about increasing your water capacity. Are you just, a lot in sewer capacity around the state is the bigger problem, the water capacity, as we know it. It's a, it's an elusive topic for a lot of jurisdictions, so I'm just interested to hear what conversation you've had as well.
I haven't had any, but, so our Director of Operations, Bobby Stahl, has really been handling that along with the town manager, and they, I know that they've had discussions with the Maryland Department of Environment and the county. There's a proposal for a water sharing agreement to tie water in from St. Charles to Tillman Lake to kind of get that water sharing agreement going, but I think it's just the details that need to be worked out at this point, and I think the state is trying to push us to working with the county to try to make that happen. All right. Thank you.
Oh, he's in the, he's in the mirror room?
Yeah.
Whoa, that's cool. You don't know he's back there. And we are recording here, you know, and not many of you have spoken yet, but Janine and myself might have already gotten ourselves in trouble, but I'm giving you a warning. All right. Okay, now you can, that one's fine. No, go back up. But no, you can stay, keep it here, keep it here. That's fine. Other ones, yeah, whatever. Whatever. I'm not, all right. I'm not going to have a wrong presentation on affordable housing planning. I'm, this is a shorter part of the agenda. I mostly wanted to focus on the requirements at the state level, some of the resources we put together, and then leave some time at the end for discussion. You saw that it was a topic that Janine had in her matrix, and I understand the concern that Janine expressed. We hear that pushback against affordable housing across the state. Completely understand it. The state also understands that, but the state has also been putting new requirements in, so it's important to know. Anyway, I'll start with, before I get to the requirements, in 2020, the Department of Housing and Community Development completed a report called the Maryland Housing Needs Assessment and Ten Year Strategic Plan, which would be my slide two, when you're ready for it. Oh, I guess I'm controlling it. Okay. All right, there we go. That's right. All right. And this was developing partnership with the University of Maryland's National Center for Smart Growth and Enterprise Community Partners. I know this is a really small font, I'm not going to read the whole thing to you, but these were their key findings. Essentially is that there's a short, a massive shortage of affordable apartments for the lowest-income families in the state. for the lowest income families in the state. That's where, there's, there's a lack of affordable housing for all levels across the state, but that's the biggest gap that they found. Um, the second one is that there are many people that are going to be coming, moving to Maryland over the next decades that are not going to be at that lowest level, but there, there are going to be some at that lowest level, but uh, even up to a little bit higher level. And we're just not right now prepared to house them affordably. Uh, so, I mean, not to, they're not trying to be alarming, but they, we need to be realistic about this. Yeah, I'm sure you've heard it. It's, it's not just a Maryland phenomenon. This is, you know, this was in, the, the, the topic of affordable housing is, you know, reaching the upper levels of political discourse in this country. So it is, it is a big issue. Um, and that uh, the biggest disparities faced in Maryland um, are uh, households and people of color, individuals with disabilities. And that these problems have only been exacerbated by the COVID nineteen pandemic. And they were noticing this back in twenty twenty when they were putting this together. So I encourage you to read this assessment. Um, it's very accessible report. It's not super long. It says appendices at the end if you want to dig into more of it. Going to do something. It worked before. I probably did. Like the wizard behind the curtains. Let me see. There we go. And I know this is really fuzzy. So here's an example. This is a that the needs assessment looks at the state, but then it also breaks it down into regional levels. Uh, this is Southern Maryland. So like Teresa Anna Rundle County is considered part of Baltimore region. Uh, and when it comes to the regions in the needs assessment, so that is included, it's not included on this slide. Uh, what you'll see here is what they call the homeowner and rental stability indices. Uh, this is broken down into census tracts. Uh, the darker areas, it's renter stability on the right and homeowner stability on the left. The darker the areas for both colors are highest need. And the areas of lowest need would be the lighter colors. Uh, and they do this, they have a mapping uh, tool that'll go along with it. And they've done this for every census, every census tract across the state as part of this analysis. And they were, they were only using American Community Survey data up to twenty seventeen. Um, so the data is a little bit older, but I would think that the trends would have, would still be uh, the same. And a lot of these, if you were to use newer American Community Survey census data, it would probably show a lot of the same thing. So they define low need for renters as having uh, so remember low need is areas that, you know, you're aspiring for. Fewer cost burden renters and fewer property quality issues with rental properties. For owners, uh, higher than average home values and lower shares of cost burden. These are in the lower area. So I wanted to find cost burden before we get too far in this. Many of you are probably aware of what that means, but uh, cost burden is when a household, a family is or they're financially burdened by the amount of money they have to spend on their various housing costs. The standard threshold is thirty percent of household income to be considered housing burden. So that's the measure they use here. You'll see that throughout a lot. Basically, all housing planning uses that thirty percent threshold. So if you're paying more than thirty percent, you're housing burdened. It pulls away resources that you could be using for other things for your family. Moderate need areas, kind of the middle colors. For renters that show that their rents increased in these areas from twenty eleven to twenty seventeen significantly. And that these areas have a higher level of special needs populations. For owners, there are higher shares of older homes in moderate areas and households facing foreclosure. Now, for the darkest color areas, uh, the um, highest needs renters, these are the highest share of cost burden renters, high poverty rates and significant housing quality issues. And for owners, highest share of cost burden owners, higher, higher, highest poverty rates, a lot of the same stuff. Significant housing quality issues and highest foreclosure rates. So um, you know, this gives you, if you want to get a sense of their analysis, they have a, a lot of that, there are many different data points that are included in this, but it'll give you a good sense of what they were finding for the community. You might find something differently, right? And a, a statewide assessment like this is not going to say everything about a community, but it, it might help inform. Pages sixty-five to seventy-one of the needs assessment, and I think it's linked in the, the digital versions of what I sent you. Um, has the section that focuses on Southern Maryland and they include suggested strategies in there specifically targeted to like low need rental areas, high need owner areas, things like that. That you might be able to include in your plans or your conversations with your community or implementation measures. Um, I know the term stability indices just sounds like something a data person made up and they probably did. But uh, it would, it's best way to think about it when you're reviewing this document as areas that need the most planning intervention of some form. So higher needs areas probably would ne- need the most focus. That doesn't mean that low need areas should not be considered, right? We want to maintain those as low need areas. Uh, so they all deserve equal consideration when it comes to affordable housing planning, affordable housing uh, preservation. But highest needs probably need the most intervention. Section five of that document includes the needs assessment, or of the needs assessment includes a downloadable housing toolbox of strategies. All right, I did want to talk about the housing element requirements, and this is what our jurors, or our department works closely with. So for the first time with House Bill ten forty-five, which passed in twenty nineteen, housing elements were required in comp plans. So for all comprehensive plans updated or adopted after June first of twenty twenty, they need to include a housing element. This is for all level of jur-, all level of jurisdictions in the state. This first bill really focused on the affordability issue, right? It said that a housing element shall assess the need for housing that is affordable to low income, which they defined as sixty percent of area median income and workforce, which is sixty to a hundred and twenty percent area median income households. There's some variations depending renter, owner, and if whether they're in a Maryland mortgage program area, which is a D A C designation. Um, but that was the requirement of that. Now, I don't want anybody to think that no comprehensive plans before June first, twenty twenty in Maryland had housing elements. Right? Housing planning goes back to the beginning of planning. This is not a new concept, not something that Maryland is the only one considering across the country. But it was the first time that is absolutely, it is required in a comprehensive plan. And if you're not familiar with area median income, it is a U S HUD uh, department calculation. They use American Community Survey data, data that's put out at the end of the previous year or beginning of the next year. And they calculate a median income, usually for a region, it's kind of based or if, if it's a metropolitan area. So like DC has a huge A M I surrounding it. Charles is in it. Uh, but it also extends into Virginia. More rural areas will just be the county. So like a Caroline County on the eastern shore has its own A M I. So the, the housing element requires you to plan around what HUD defines as A M I. Now, the newer one is H B ninety. This passed in twenty twenty-one. It became effective just this year on January first, twenty twenty-three. So this added new requirements to a housing element. It built upon, um, it's section three dash one, one, four, I believe, of the Land Use Article. Well, that's for, I'm getting sidetracked. So this has added affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement to housing elements. And it said that all housing elements shall include an assessment of fair housing to ensure that the local government is affirmatively furthering fair housing. So what does that mean? Affirmatively furthering fair housing goes back to the nineteen sixty-eight Fair Housing Act. Um, and it essentially means that preventing or not promoting discrimination in housing is not enough for jurisdiction. Back then it had, this keeps cutting in and out. It's the green light is on, but my okay. I have a pretty loud voice that might not be good with the recording. So uh, essentially, what that means at the federal level is that if you're receiving HUD funding uh, of any sort, uh, you need to make sure you are affirmatively furthering fair housing. So you're promoting equal access uh, to all members to regardless of protected class, to high opportunity areas, decent housing. All right, this is still a HUD requirement, but now it's a state requirement to include that in your housing elements. Yes, sir. No?
Why is there uh, exemptions to this only required for non-charter counties and municipalities?
I was, I was going to say next, but that's a good question. I can't speak to that because we told that, so the, 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 to get into like the code, the uh, that, the comprehensive plan requirements for charter counties are in one section of the code. They're in section Land Use Article, section subtitle one or title one. Uh, the, the comprehensive plan elements uh, requirements for non-charter and non-charter counties municipalities are in three. And we could more, I mean, we, we, we always review the bills and we said in twenty twenty-one, hey, this appears to only be impacting uh, the title three, which is non-charters and municipalities. I don't know if they didn't listen to us or there was their, their point. But they only changed that section of the Land Use Article. H B ten forty-five changed both sections of the Land Use Article. You'd have to talk to the general assembly members who were sponsoring that bill. I don't know if it was an oversight that they didn't realize that the, the, that the comprehensive plan was impacted by two sections of the Land Use Article or not. It might have been done on purpose, too. One thing I will say is that HUD has this distinction between entitlement communities and non-entitlement communities. So entitlement communities are of a certain size. You have a certain population threshold. And entitlement communities, I can't spit out, I can't name them all in the state, but entitlement communities get their funding from HUD directly. Non-entitlement communities are smaller and they get HUD money filtered through the state. Now, if you're an entitlement community, you're going to have, you, you're going to be very familiar with A F F H, which is what we call it, affirmatively furthering fair housing, because you've been working directly with HUD for a long time. So maybe because most charter counties are larger and a lot of them are entitlement communities, they left them out, but I don't know, it's somewhere in the legal or in the legislative process, charter counties were just never included. But that could very well change. They can always revisit the, the section of Land Use Article and add it. So Charles County is not officially required to affirmatively further fair housing in their housing element. But Charles County is an entitlement community, so anytime they're dealing with HUD, they're going to have to. At least I believe Charles. Is anybody here from Charles? You're not entitlement community? Okay, I was wrong. So. Well, entitlement community, like Montgomery's a mon-, entitlement community. Yeah. Oh, that's you would know better than me for sure. Um, but I know it's not just based on income. Uh, there's, there meant multiple factors. So anyway, yeah, that that, for, so for right now, only municipalities and non-charter counties need to address affirmatively furthering fair housing in there. Welcome, Danny. I'm going to let, I'm going to finish my housing presentation and I'm going to let you go and, and introduce yourself. So we're, okay. All right, so I want to briefly talk about some of the resources that we put together. Uh, some of you are probably familiar with this. I've done many presentations on this. We're continuing to expand it. So in response to H B ten forty-five in twenty twenty, we put, we developed the models and guidelines, the housing element. Uh, this is the homepage. Uh, I can see this better before. So I, they've got the arrows pointing at different things. Housing planning gives a little bit of background about the importance of affordable housing planning and the bill itself. Uh, housing data, I'm going to show you a little bit here. We have a housing data dashboard that provides a lot of accessible data at different geographic levels to help with your housing planning. It's housing practices, uh, gives some common practices and examples from Maryland of affordable housing, effective affordable housing strategies. Uh, we have uh, resources, some sample goals, objectives and strategies. And then the newest one we added is the H B ninety. Uh, we just added that at the beginning of this month. Uh, that has, defines the requirements of that bill and includes some existing resources on A F F H, affordable, affirmatively furthering fair housing and how you might use them. This is still under development. Uh, this is a new law. We're still, we're still figuring out exactly um, the kind of resources we want to provide. Plus, we have a new administration at the state level. We want to get some direction from them, but we do some, have some initial guidance on there. And then the bottom, uh, we have some, a bunch of additional resources. There's a lot of affordable housing resources out there. We also Kristin, primary author of a number of method, methodology articles that we use to explain the needs assessment, the D H C document, how you might be able to use that in your housing element. Uh, and then some local examples of comprehensive plan housing elements that we found particularly effective since uh, twenty, since the, the H B ten forty-five was passed in twenty twenty. Um, so we have a lot of information there. It's always growing. The image is linked right there. Here's a, just a screenshot of the housing data dashboard, one of the pages. You see you got whoa. Sorry. Does this have a like a red light? Okay, so I get, here's La Plata. Anyway, this is a, our, uh, no, no, that's okay. Uh, I guess a lot of people can see stuff up there. I forgot about that. Um, so this is just a snapshot of the, the front page of the, or the homepage of the dashboard. You can, there's three geographies available. There's um, census tract. The same thing I've shown you earlier with those maps of Southern Maryland. There's uh, county. And then there's what we call place. There's a couple kinds of places. There's incorporated places, like you would think of La Plata. Then there's also these things called census designated places, which kind of have the look and feel of a town, but aren't really an incorporated place. So you can select the different geography. You click on the screen. Um, and it'll show you different data for them. Right down here, in the rectangle is what we call the A M I calculator. Since ten forty-five, I showed you is based on those area median income ranges. We have, we developed this calculator that depending on where you select, it shows the A M I, the current A M I for that, uh, be at that place, that census tract or that county. And then it does some calculations based on those ranges. So to show you, you know, at sixty percent, how met, what is the, what is that? What does that income look like in this A M I area? It'll also break that down using the thirty percent how, um, cost burden threshold I mentioned earlier, it'll calculate what's an affordable rate or affordable monthly payment. So a, a family, a household is not exceeding that cost burden threshold. And it does that regardless of where you click, right? So again, A M Is are going to be for much broader regions. So if you're inside Charles County, every single census tract or every single place you click is going to have the same A M I. You click into another county or census tract into an, in another A M I area and it'll change. Uh, this is just one example. If you were to look at the main page, there's a whole, like ten more of these quick charts of key housing uh, data. And again, that changes dynamically based on the census tract you pick or the county or whatever. Um, you can, you can export reports also based on the geography you select that have a lot more detailed level. Uh, detailed information, the charts are just a few selected ones. And then finally, it, it is an interactive mapper, so it has additional layers that you can add on top, like priority funding areas, sustainable communities, sea level rise areas. It also has parcel data. Uh, assessment data down to the parcel level that you can look at for your affordable housing planning. So again, this is linked as well. Uh, and then just real quickly, I, I'm not going to go over all of these. They're all in the stuff I sent you. Uh, these are some key resources that we recommend you, you check out. Um, we have some self-assessments that we created that we're, we're actually currently updating right now. These are for jurisdictions that are, say, in the early phases or even later phases of their housing planning. These are questions you can ask yourself about housing in your community. You could ask staff members, the planning commission could ask it. Uh, you could ask your stakeholders. You could ask it as part of your outreach. Um, they're, they're in the three areas of um, vision, analysis, analysis, policy and implementation and regulation. Um, because they were hopefully helped they get people, get the conversation going locally. Uh, we have best practice examples. We have a filterable table of affordable housing resources that you can look at the county, state, local and a federal level. It's also broken up between financial and technical assistance. We have the methodology articles I mentioned, and then the new H B ninety stuff with more to come. Uh, and then there's a lot of other resources, because as I mentioned, we are not the first ones to do this by any stretch of the imagination. We're and we're definitely not the most educated on this topic. Uh, we encourage, there's a lot of people doing really great work in this area. One other thing I really want to point out is this website called Local Housing Solution. I put, check this one out to make sure you don't forget. It's a fantastic website that is all about planning for affordability locally. Has any kind of strategy you can think of. It has a policy brief on it. Um, resources, lots of detailed examples. But one of the best things that I've recently found that it has is that it will generate uh, a, a need, a local housing needs assessment, right? We saw earlier that the requirement of ten forty-five was that you shall assess the need for affordable housing. We use more complicated legal language. So you could pick La Plata. You could pick any jurisdiction that you're working for. And it's going to use mostly A C S data, but a, a little bit of other data. And it generates like a thirty, forty page report. Now, it's, it's obviously an objective outsider view. It's not going to be enough on its own. Uh, but it's got excellent, excellent data. It compares the, you know, trends in your, whatever jurisdiction you're looking at to the county, to the state or the federal level or the national level. Uh, and it has fair housing information and data in it as well. For some smaller jurisdictions, there's some data gaps because the sample sizes are so small that the, the margin of error is so big that they're, they don't feel comfortable like actually using that data. But I definitely recommend you check it out. Uh, and then finally, just, there's some other things down there that uh, lets you peruse on your own. What we're developing right now, in addition to H B ninety stuff, we're expanding the self-assessments to have more detail. And then we're also developing, I'm close on this one. I just need to finalize it. It's a housing element worksheet for jurisdictions that it'll walk them through the resources we have here and you can pull out data and put it into tables and it kind of leaves you with, after you go through this worksheet, it leaves you with a product, like a lot of information that you could plug into a housing element. So this, our resources and D H CDs cover the broad So this, our resources and DHCDs cover the broad spectrum of affordable housing planning. But the main focus of us putting this together was to help jurisdictions that are doing a housing element for the first time, to try to make it easier for them to complete one. There are many jurisdictions that have been doing great housing elements for a long time, so not everybody's gonna need it, but that was our goal. I'm gonna turn it over to Danny here in a second, but I'm happy to answer any questions of housing, about housing, about our resources, suggestions for your community. Yes? Oh, sorry, models and guidelines. That was just, so it, if you go back, you'll, yeah, I should have, I should have done that. See, this is our models and guidelines, sorry, the housing element. So that's what it was. Should have made them more obvious. Any other questions? So say this, I just knew, like, housing planning is gonna continue to be a big topic and encourage everybody to talk about it locally. Talk to us, talk to Sarah, choose your entry into the Maryland Department of Planning, you can always reach out to me as well.
We have good dialogues as examples to kind of work with your community, like ways to approach this. We have one affordable housing project that's proposed in La Plata. They kind of caused a big stir, but it was kind of difficult on how to present this and how to have that conversation.
Yeah, I'd say we have a few examples in there, not just about that. The examples themselves will have a little bit of how that happened locally. But it, I mean, I could, I could see us probably needing to develop that specific example. That's another elusive thing that, that's very tricky. We, I mean, we include language at the beginning that may not convince anybody of why affordable housing is important. And it not only is, I mean, it's obviously very important for equity and, you know, social reasons, but it's also important from an economic development standpoint. You know, it's something that every community should embrace. But those are just like talking points. But yeah, I'd look at some of the examples because some of them were, had some rough patches at the beginning and they were able to work through them.
AMI, maybe whatever, people get lost, but maybe you start presenting like we're looking at this average payment range that might.
Yeah, I mean, no, I agree, I mean, let's, I'm gonna have to walk away here because I can't see this, but.
Washington, Alexander, Alexander, G C, it's a long metro area with AMI. You know, we're talking about affordable low income monthly payments for 60% AMI is $2,000.
So I think that right there, we see where the difference.
Yeah, I mean, I would argue, you know, I think I would argue like you probably need stuff more affordable than that. But if you're trying to explain to your community, like, are we having to include this in our housing? This is what we have to plan for, that's the level we're talking about. And I mean, most likely, this would, I think in 2021, the Washington Metro income limit or AMI was like 130. I mean, it's jumping a lot, it's gonna continue to go up. So yeah, I mean.
That might be helpful as well.
Yeah. Yes.
So what can't we call it workforce housing? Because it's not just, you know, and it's not just, you know, race specific. And when we talk about low income, people forget about the military. They forget about the police officers and the people that work and serve us here in our community. You know, restaurant, children who just decide they don't want to go to college. They like working in restaurants, they like serving, that's their thing. They can afford to live here. And most of our communities really don't have apartments anymore. And when you look at apartments, the rent is as high as a mortgage, you're better off owning a home. So why can't we switch the name from affordable to workforce?
I don't know if you need to switch the name because that's actually.
In the law, it does say low income and workforce. So it does have both, I mean, you can talk about how you like. I will say that the state law does define what low income housing is.
I just think that, you know, the stereotype associated with affordable housing from when they are thinking about it is not what it is today. You know, and I really just think, and I get it, education is so important, but.
Well, I think you're right. I mean, everybody needs to talk about this, what works in the context of their community. But I, I mean, one of the key strategies, I mean, we've planners and urban, city, county leaders have learned for long, many years is that you just don't concentrate affordable housing. You don't concentrate low income housing areas of poverty because this, it's just, it has no benefit, it doesn't, it almost always yields negative outcomes. But it also reinforces that stereotype. So you can incorporate affordable housing into market race housing, which I know is not very palatable to some people. But if you can find a way to integrate it, so it's not a preponderance of one area, that you, it's, it's better for everybody involved and it yields better outcomes, it helps overcome stereotypes. And things like inclusionary zoning, which we'll talk about later, you know, can do that. I mean, they have limited scope, but.
And that's the development that was coming here proposed, it did not concentrate all of it. It, you know, that the income went from one level to the next. So it really would have been a great thing to bring here if they can get it to.
Yes, sir.
Affordable housing workforce housing. In Charles County, you know, planning commission, I've kind of noticed where we build and what we build is more driven by availability of school seats, school seat allocation than planning them.
Yeah.
And planning around school districts, not best plan. Now, to Charles County's credit, they've done some relief for workforce housing and moderate income housing. You know, our APFO manual where they give that preference to that.
Yep.
But in many ways, it would be way off base. If I look at, when you restrict this school seat from a family of children, it's almost like discrimination against that sector of our community, which many times happens to be most of our lowest income members. So how do other communities handle that problem?
I mean, that's, yeah, that's, that's a big question. I mean, what you're talking about having some modifications in the APFO for workforce and affordable housing is one way. I've had objections so far. I mean, the, I mean, the, it could be a dirty word, but redistricting is, is, is one way to do that. I mean, and one of the reasons why school redistricting is so tough is because it gets into these exact issues. It's another area for people to fight against affordable housing for the same kind of fears that they have. I mean, that's one way and trying to. Yeah, I mean, you try to increase school capacity with, in certain areas that may need it, especially in trying to invest your, you know, your school construction funding in, you know, increase the schools in areas. The thing about fair housing in areas of lower opportunity, you try to increase the facilities there, while also at the same time trying to develop housing in the more affluent or more opportunity focused areas that is affordable. So you can spread it around. But you're right, I mean, planning, planning around school capacity is not the way to really do it. And I encourage every, I encourage county and municipal planners to work with their local education agency around this issue. And yeah, I mean, APFOs are too often used, especially around schools, as a way to kill development and perpetuate, you know, the negative impacts on those parts of the population that are experiencing. I can't say I have the full answer for you, but it's a big question I hope you can talk about. Okay. All right, we need to keep going, I may be able to talk a little more about housing, but you can bring me back up in the discussion part at the end. But I wanted to introduce Danny Winborn, the president of MPCA. Danny, we'd like you to come up here if you can, because they're recording, there's a microphone.
Hi, everyone, I apologize for being late. I had to go to work, you know how that is, on the lead. So, but my name's Danny Winborn. I am the president of the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. Been the president for about six, seven years. Hi, how you doing? I'm sorry. She was at our conference. And I am a planning commissioner in the city of Gaithersburg. I've been a planning commissioner for a long time, I've been a planning commissioner for 21 years. When I joined the planning commission, my youngest son went to school and told everybody in school that his father was the president of the United States and he was gonna make sure that ice cream trucks came down our street every week. Had to kind of tell him I wasn't quite the president. But anyway, I say all that to say, I'm a citizen planner, first and foremost. A lot of you all are professionals and you could tell me a lot about planning and that kind of thing. But my, my biggest job is to be collaborative, do outreach and figure out how we can share information. I'm so excited to be in La Plata. My middle son was at University of Maryland College Park, he stayed in the La Plata dorm. So that's the only La Plata I knew. So now I know what the real La Plata is, so that's really great to see. But it's really important that we in the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association do these regional workshops to reach out to every corner of Maryland and the region. We also collaborate in DC, in West Virginia and some other places, but we focus here in Maryland. So it's very exciting to be here. And where's Janine? Have, I haven't met you, Janine, hello? We've emailed many, many times. Thank you so much for offering to host us, we really appreciate that. And I hope that you get stuff out of this regional workshop. Sir, I'm not sure what your name is, I don't know whether you all went around the room or whatever, but she asked a great question. That is the struggle that we have is, you said, ma'am, workforce housing or affordable housing, that is our biggest, that's the holy grail. If we can figure that out, then, then all will be right with the world. But unfortunately, we haven't figured that out. So hopefully one day we will. We, I'm actually in my, in my work life, I'm the deputy city clerk for the city of Rockville, Maryland. So, you know, of course, I'm, we're amenable and responsible to the mayor and council. And that's one of our biggest issues is, is affordable housing. We have been partnering with, you know, federal government agencies to come up with, you know, reasonable affordable housing. But as soon as, you know, we get that all developed, it's gone. It's, it's gone quickly and we need more, we need much, much more. And then, you know, I'll be, maybe, maybe not as politically correct as I should be, but then we have the huge problem of NIMBYism. People don't want affordable housing in their neighborhood, they don't, they're worried about their, their, their values and that kind of thing. You know, when we were all little kids, you didn't care who you lived next door to as long as they had good toys, right? So the problem is, you know, we have to figure out how we're gonna move forward. But I'm not gonna take, I'm, where are we on the, on that agenda? I want to make sure that I'm not taking too much time.
The next piece is assuming.
Is there, okay, I was wondering if that, so that's, you're back up here. And I just wanted to take another couple of minutes to, to offer that. If you go to the Maryland Planning Department's website, we have like a little corner there and we try to have some information. Oh, hi, how are you, good to see you back there. And we, we try to have some, we try to have some spotlights where we talk about what's going on with the Maryland Planning Commissioners Association. But what we, what I want to offer to you is that, is that you try to stay connected with us. Use our resources, use us, we hope that we can connect with you in some way. We hope in some small measure we are able to give you information that is valuable to you and help you as professional planners, because that's a collaboration and as citizen planners. I did want to take the time to acknowledge our executive committee, our executive board. Many of them, of course, are not here, unfortunately, our vice president, Bill Butts, is not here. Secretary Roxanne Hemphill is another person not here, I'm sure Doug Hill. Doug, I say Doug Hill. Sorry, Doug is, Doug is not here with us. He, he was actually supposed to be here, but he got, he got sick. And I see Teresa, did you, sis, stand up? Oh, you did, you introduced yourself, okay. And then Kristin and Joe, we could not do what we do without the invaluable, invaluable support of the Maryland Department of Planning and Joe Griffith and, and Kirsten, Kirsten, I said Kirsten, Kristin Humphrey. So we, we just, we can't do what we do without them. I'm going to sit down right now. Oh, I, I got a new knee, so I'm working with my new knee. It's not working as fast as I would like it to work, so I have to have a little assistance. So that's why I have the cane, I got the new knee and I got, I actually got my first one in February, then I got the second one. I was very ambitious, I got it in November. And I'm still trying to, my, my doctor said it's a marathon, not a sprint. And I said, I'll show him, but no, he's showing me, so I have to be very, very careful. But I'm gonna come back up a little later, but I'm so glad that you're here. It's wonderful to see a full room and I hope that we impart some information that in some way is valuable to you. But more importantly, I have to give a plug, we are coming up on our 40th anniversary and we're going to have an anniversary conference. Our 40th anniversary annual conference will be October 24th through to 26th, right? And we're trying to get some really, you know, cool keynote speakers, some, a lot of great things that we can discuss. I'm trying to, trying to get my friend Aruna to come, I know Aruna Miller personally. Trying to get her to come and be a keynote speaker for us. And we want to make it very, very, very special. And we, it's, one of, a couple of people here have been to our conference. We really try to make it meaningful and valuable, so we hope that you have an opportunity to join us. Citizen planners, interested parties, professional planners to share and collaborate the whole planning process. So we hope that you can join us, put that on your calendar and hopefully you can, you can be there with us. So Joe, I'm gonna let you continue.
And then Janine has an update for the.
Okay.
But thank you again.
Sure.
There's just the, the grants that we got, figured out the name of them. So all of these were through the Maryland Department of Transportation, it was the Safe Streets for All program. That's what we're using for our Charles Street safety corridor study. And then we have the final ways network grant. Yeah, pedestrian bike type. Can, can like, is that for involved?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. And I, and I neglected in the last conversation, because there's some good questions that Michael Yurkovich was gonna share, something that Charles County and that he's working on with Charles County around affordable housing. So I know you had some items, would you like to come up here? Or just because they're recording, I wouldn't, I was told we need to use a microphone. So sorry for getting to calling you earlier, Michael.
I don't have a whole lot to say, I don't have a presentation, unfortunately. So a part of our portable housing work group, we have three items we'll be working on in the immediate future. Hopefully, one of which we'll bring towards during our PGF roundtable meetings in the next few months. The first being, the county currently has what we call our moderately, moderately priced dwelling program. As it is currently written in our zoning ordinance, it's not fully enacted. So our first zoning text amendment should primarily be focused on fully enacting that portion of our zoning ordinance. And that would be more of an industry term of inclusionary zoning, either voluntary or mandatory, you know, just depends on how the discussions go. And then we'll also be working on ZTA focused on the missing middle housing, introducing new residential housing types, as well as rolling back some of our restrictions on accessory dwelling units. Which in Charles County, for a large, for most of the county, the only way for you have to have. the only way for you to have, to have a detached accessory dwelling is to have a garage on the first floor and the unit on the second floor. So a lot of times that's cost prohibitive for individuals who are looking to have that on their property. So that's just one example. And then lastly, on a case by case basis, county has been providing some gap financing in form of payment in lieu of taxes for some affordable housing developments. So we're very early on in the process of making that a formal process and not something that's just case by case. Those are the three things that from the work group we've been working on based on what our goals and our comp plan and in the housing section of our comp answer.
You, you did a housing section before it was required.
Yeah. So unless anybody has any specific questions.
What's the key?
Um, so there's been, I, I can't remember by name, but there's been a couple developments that have been in the county that there, I don't know the specific numbers with the county. Either provided some tax incentives, but I, I'm not in the finance section. So I don't really know the whole part of agreements. Yeah, there's a development, development agreements. So some of those, most of those projects are, have been already built out. Some of them are still in the process of being planned still.
Thank you, Michael. So of course you're behind, but that's okay. I'll cut off my presentation.
I guess you'd be, it's parked right on here. It's, the back hatch is open. That's your car and that's right there.
Better get that taken care of. So we're a little behind as I would anticipate almost every time. Danny knows my history. Knows it well. That's okay. I'll just cut off what I have to. But I, I wanted to say before we continue to follow what Danny was saying. And Teresa is one of our newest board members. So we have the executive committee that Danny's on. That's the names he mentioned. They've been officers, executive committee for a long time. Teresa was, was voted, elected at the, the last conference to be our new board member. And we also have another one, A.C. Alray from Cambridge Planning Commission. So we're look, we have more spots on our board. The board meets quarterly, the executive committee meets monthly. So you know, we're asking that. So any planning commissioners, we, we don't have a Southern Maryland representative. So I mean, I guess you're, you're right on the, on the border. So I'm sorry, Teresa. Yeah. Annapolis could, could go either way, but we could use more Southern Maryland representatives. If anybody's interested, we buy lunch. So if anybody's interested in joining the board of the MPCA, attending a meeting every quarter, please join us. All right. So yeah, I probably won't get through all of this, but that's okay. We have some good stuff after me. So I developed this presentation with request and insight from Janine. With a name like zoning growth and development, obviously this is a huge topic, right? There's no way that you could address this in an afternoon workshop, let alone forty-five minutes. But I hope that we cover an array of topics and I include some Southern Maryland examples in here that you might be able to follow up on, talk with your colleagues, fellow planning commissioners about, and further explore. I want to note that I use multiple Southern Maryland examples in here, some from your jurisdictions. I don't work in your jurisdiction. Please, please correct me if I'm wrong or I misstate something. I simplify it, overcomplicate it. I will not be offended. I wanted to use Southern Maryland examples because that's where we are and this is Southern Maryland Regional Workshop. But I want to be corrected if I said something incorrectly. And I also finally want to confess that I'm not like a zoning technical expert. Some of you probably have a lot more specific zoning technical experience than I do. And that's fine. Again, correct me, share your examples. I, I think it's important to know, like, we're here to learn from each other, not just from me, not just from Danny, not just from Janine. I mean, we hope we can help, but we're here to learn from each other. We want to have the discussion, share, like we've already had, share examples. We think that's the best way to learn. And if you have any questions for me that I can't answer or nobody else can answer, we'll record them. I have my colleagues recording questions. We'll get back to you. And we have the discussion questions at the end. Okay. So here's a, a brief overview of the content. We'll see if we get through it all. But we're going to start with a comprehensive plan, get into how it connects to zoning, some zoning tools. And then we'll talk about a little bit about infrastructure and infill and design. A lot of the stuff that Janine was talking about earlier, we're going to review here. So it's great to see that you all are considering that. Because I mean, the, the issues you're facing and your objectives are what we see across the state and comprehensive plans, sustainable communities, designations, uh, uh, applications. Okay. Oh, and there's also an appendix. I want to thank Teresa. Because I, we had an MPCA board meeting last Friday and I, here's my draft presentation. And Teresa's like, whoa, 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 whoa. That's way too long. You're going to have to put some in the appendix. And she was absolutely right. So it's in the appendix. And we're not going to have, I can tell you right now, we're not going to have time to go over it, but there's some information in there. You can look at some links. I'll talk to some of that information, but I don't have it all in there. And again, Danny knows my history that I tend to try to overstuff presentations, but it's okay. I can, I can deal with that. I'm learning. There you go. That's what I like to hear. I did want to ask a couple of questions here to activate your knowledge on this topic before we begin. So I'd be interested for anybody, again, if you're going to raise your hand, remind us your name and what jurisdiction you're with. How does your comprehensive plan address the issue of growth and development? I'm interested to hear. Remind us who you are.
Our highest density is is pushed to those town centers.
You have expansion areas too, right? Because I know you just had a comp plan amendment to reduce the expansion areas for some of them.
Nineteen, we had expanded a couple of them. So our BSC asked us to reduce that expansion area. So yes and no. A couple of them remain expanded. Of them do not, but it's, it's just to avoid this sprawl. This Calvert only has the long, really main corridor.
Great. No. That, you know, yeah, town centers, focus areas, areas of existing concentration and growth. We're going to look at some of those examples later, but yes, that's it's a great example. Any other examples, maybe from a municipal perspective? Share if, even if you're not, I'm not, go ahead. Remind us who you are. Okay, great.
Sitting on a proposed development for some thirty year. Didn't really see that changing dramatically until like the day after it got approved by the town council.
Oh, no.
Suddenly a new developer came in and it was scary because of the speed they wanted to move. So big challenge. But to address your initial question, I thought if we had enough resources to be able to assess what the expected growth was going to be. That's how we put the plan together. We had to get those spots.
We also have the boundary. So we can't go beyond that. We can't annex anything outside.
Yep, that's a common one. I mean municipalities can, they're unique and like county can't expand into another county, right? Unless law was radically going to change, but municipalities can't. So they can grow outwards and inwards, whereas counties kind of have to focus on certain areas within the county. All right, I'll keep moving. How does your zoning guide and implement growth? I know this is a big question too. And you're like, all right, how can I answer something so big? Yes, or share who you are. Yeah.
Lot size, windows, density, corners.
Great, great. Yep, you'll see that. Yep. And I've seen that in definitely in your.
Can I ask a quick question? So how does the APFO affect that? Do you have one place?
That would be meaningful. It's kind of a planner of Charles County and work primarily in our area. Area. And I'm so sorry that you repeat the concept.
How does APFO affect that?
So our APF specifically covers pool, water, sewer, traffic and rural fire suppression. So just as far as that. Um, in terms of zoning and development and whatnot. Obviously schools are, school capacity is, is a huge part of that. That comes pretty much directly from the Board of Education, but we work closely with them. We do have a priority funding area that is part of our comprehensive plan. That really does, the goal is to focus development in the areas where the most resources are currently available and that you see mostly in water, sewer and schools. Rural fire suppression only applies to our tier three. So our subject tier map, that state subject tier map. So you see that play into it where we have certain regulations where you can't have in our zoning ordinance. For example, more than seven lots, a seven lot subdivision in areas where those resources just aren't as accessible. Our APFO though does include something I was going to speak on earlier, but we ran out of time. So I apologize. But we do have a program called the Priority Development Project Program. So the PDP program. And what that does allow for is there, there are a few ways to qualify for that program. I'm not going to get into the other ones, but one of them is affordable housing. And so if a developer signs up for this PD program and promises to do twenty-five percent affordable housing in that development, then they actually get a school seats not from the waiting list. So it is a way to kind of, you know.
Get around.
Yeah, to get around, but to, to continue progress kind of with a specific goal that isn't really tied up with some of the other issues we have. And it is, and it is immersive. So it is, it's not just separate. It is the goal of it is to be mixed in with market housing and affordable housing. You know, as Michael was speaking on, we don't actually have affordable house, we don't have affordable housing ordinance. So it is based on a, on a case by case basis. And we're currently dealing with that right now. I'm trying to figure out what those parameters, what those rules are. You know, how far apart can the house be? Do you want it all shoved into one corner and that kind of thing? And that is in our APFO.
It is really great. And I'm not trying to usurp or anything, but twenty-five percent is hot. Most places it's like fifteen percent, twelve percent, something like that.
Yeah.
But the reason I ask that question is, is the way that in our area developers get around it is they always, they just want to sit in your house. Now, we need senior housing, but that is really a way that they would get around it. Is that everything's fifty five.
Yeah, yeah. And well, in our twenty-five and older buildings, kind of two are getting a bonus because obviously you don't have to get school seats for that. We don't require school seat allocations for two hundred. Obviously you can't be in school. So there, there is a little bit of a bonus of that as well. And some developers do decide to do, to buy an older housing. Just because there isn't that, that restraint in the areas where, you know, schools are resources and sometimes they're very limited. So sometimes that is the thing that people do.
On a point like at the, at the conference we did in October, that thirty years of planning in Maryland talked about APFOs extensively and what we've learned about it. We're still trying to get those videos loaded. We, we, we did, we actually paid for somebody to, to record our conference. We're almost there. Kristen, we're almost there, right? You and I, we're getting the videos loaded for the website. Should be, should be soon. But it took us a while to get the videos from our videographer too. But there's a lot of good information about APFOs. They really dig into it. All right. I want you to keep this question in mind, but I'm going to keep going. I'm not going to ask it right now. In what ways are your comprehensive plan under zoning code insufficient to address development and growth in a community? I'm sure there are many ways, but I don't want to discuss it right now. So we can keep going, but I think it'll connect to some of the other stuff. Okay. So we'll start with the comprehensive plan. All right. This is very small and I know you can't see it, but it was sent to you. So the concept of growth is as old as planning. Like growth areas is like as old as planning itself. And you know, I don't want you to think that it all emanates from Maryland law, that we're like particularly unique in many respects in this. But the Landuse article, which I've mentioned a couple of times today, does have some specific requirements about growth areas. One of them is the, the visions. There are twelve visions that all comprehensive plans are supposed to embody. It started off with eight now, or seven. Now it's twelve. It's changed. One of them is growth areas. And if you look at it, it focuses on concentrated and existing populations and strategically selected new centers, right? So you're thinking about where is our concentration of population already? You know, so municipalities often. But also where can we decide to grow that maybe isn't our concentration right now? But they talk about strategic, right? You know, just wherever, right? So you want to think about areas that are, you know, proximate to existing population centers or connected to infrastructure already or to transportation networks. So that, that's very important to keep that in mind about strategic. Am I, I'm looking like, okay, all right. A land use element here again is required for non-charter counties and municipalities, but a land use element is required for charter counties. But I don't know how you do a comp plan without addressing land use. So it's kind of silly. But so the land use element, and basically all charter counties are going to have some form of land use element in their comprehensive plan. Talks about the required plans for the general location, character, extent and interrelationship of land uses. So all those would be related to growth. And then there's the development regulations element, which is required for all comprehensive plans. They talk here, they specifically call out the planning commission, right? The planning commission is the holder, the guide of the comprehensive plan. And it shall include the planning commission's recommendation for land development regulations to implement the plan. And then it talks about in designated areas of growth. You need a plan for economic development through innovative techniques, whatever that means. And then streamlined review of application. We've seen a couple of examples here about carve outs for affordable housing and APFO. But if you're looking to promote growth in certain areas, streamlined applications, making it easier is one of the, one of the, the main ways that you can try to do that. So the development policy growth areas are envelopes. All right. This is one of Charles County. These are more common in counties, but you could find them in municipalities as well. It's essentially areas that a county would designate for growth, where they want to focus their infrastructure, they want to focus their population and focus their capital investment around all of those. Let's see. Land use designations can supplement these, such as you have, you certain descriptions of your high, high density residential, low density residential, agricultural, all the, all those land designation categories you've thought of. But all of those are setting the stage, describing, planning for where you want to grow. And these could have any number of different names. But development district is what Charles County uses, right? I'm right about that, right? Charles County still uses development district. All right, all right, good, good, good. All right. And then municipal growth. We were talking about this earlier. Here's La Plata right here. All right. So municipal growth elements are required for municipal comprehensive plans if the municipality wants to annex land. Essentially, it's like, if you want to annex, you have to have an MGE and you have to have in your MGE, which is municipal growth element, the areas that you want to annex. All right. And that requires consistency. We're going to look at what consistency means here in a section, second. It should, MGE should consider not only what and what areas you want to annex, but what you envision in those areas. And I know La Plata does that. You have like some areas more for commercial development, more for residential. You should really plan that out ahead of time. So again, your growth starts with your comprehensive plan. There's the five year rule, which we promote coordination between municipalities and counties, because if a municipality is annexing land, they cannot development, they cannot develop it at substantially higher densities or with substantially different uses within five years unless they get express consent from the county, which is a waiver. Go ahead.
Yeah. But we're also a priority funding area. And in order to give the Bay Restoration Grant funding to the state, to the health department, it has to be a certain density.
Yeah.
So when we're annexing these in, we're zoning them R twenty-one, which is twenty-one thousand square foot blocks. It doesn't meet.
Doesn't meet the zoning density. Yeah.
So we've actually had that conversation. We're going to have to update that within our zoning code.
Yeah. It's important to know for the five year rule is that a municipality can zone, if there are lawyers in here, I probably apologize for oversimplifying this. This is my understanding. You know, you can zone it whatever you want upon annexation. So it might be zoned agricultural in the county zoning. You could zone it high density residential. I can tell you right now, just but most likely those are going to be substantially higher density, substantially different uses. So you cannot develop to those uses within five years unless the county said, yeah, we're going to, our county commissioners, our county council grants you express consent or a waiver to do that. But you can zone it whatever you want to. You just can't develop within the five years. So keep that in mind. It's, it's easier probably just go ahead and zone it what you want it to be. You just can't develop unless you get that consent. But I, we encourage counties and municipalities to work together on this. Okay. All right. We talked about smart growth here, right? It's a commonly used term in planning, particularly in Maryland. It's a commonly used term in planning, particularly in Maryland. Any of the profession, I mean, everybody here has heard definitely about planning. So in Maryland alone, we have an office of smart growth, we have a smart growth coordinating committee, we have a smart growth sub cabinet. There's a national center for smart growth down in University of Maryland. And probably many more things that I'm, I'm not keeping up with, right? Here's the general, here's, it's kind of a lot, but that the state government article even defines it, right? So it, it means a lot in Maryland, right? I'm sure you all have heard opponents of growth generally use the term smart growth as a weapon in opposition, right? They'll say this isn't smart growth because it's growth of any type, right? So smart growth doesn't mean no growth, it's important to keep in mind, I mean, there's a term smart, right? It actually advocates growth, but in a carefully planned, consistent way, right? This includes alignment across planning documents. So smart growth means your planning documents align, such as your comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinances, your water and sewer plants. Your capital improvement programs, transportation plans, and on and on and on, they should be consistent. They should say whether you want to grow and where you don't want to grow and how you want to grow. That's smart growth, not no growth altogether, alright? Alright, so essentially it means if somebody was reading your planning documents. They would find that they align and are consistent. So your comprehensive plan might say something like it wants a certain area, this is an example of inconsistency. Says this area should be low density residential on septic. But then you go and look at the water and sewer plan and it says, no, we want to serve this. This area is planned for sewer, public sewer service in five or six years. Those are inconsistent, that's not smart growth, and that's the kind of stuff we look for in Maryland Department of Planning. We want your documents to align, we want to promote growth, but we need your documents to align, or we recommend they do, and the state does as well. So it is targeted, alright? Look briefly here at the, the zoning and the comprehensive plan. Probably one of the most important ways to monitor and govern growth in any community. To build off this concept of smart growth, it should be as used as a tool to grow where the comprehensive plan says you want to grow, right? We just showed some examples of how a comprehensive plan can do that. What does consistent with the comprehensive plan mean? There actually is a definition in the land use article, again, I'm referencing that article one dash three zero three. For it actually to be consistent with or have consistency with a comprehensive plan. Any planning actions need to further but not be contrary to these following. Alright, so that's definitely a legal term, and a lawyer would say whether or not it was or wasn't for court. But essentially any planning action, your planning action could be zoning, it could be incentives, development regulations, it could be infrastructure funding. They need to be consistent with these, this aspects of your comprehensive plan. And right, all of these could be related to growth, but the densities or intensities at the end. So that's, these to further and not be contrary to, so there is a definition of consistency. And comprehensive plans are in the land use article, and this is something that we're just constantly looking at at the Maryland Department of Planning, and I hope you all are too. Right, I know a lot of local planners and planning commissions, like is this proposal consistent with our comprehensive plan? Is this funding we want to do is consistent with our comp plan? Is a sustainable communities renewal application consistent with the comprehensive plan? Alright, there's comprehensive rezonings, I think you said you did one in twenty eighteen or nineteen? Yep, yep. So comprehensives, a comprehensive rezoning often, usually, commonly is done after the adoption of a comprehensive plan. It could be done after the adoption of a neighborhood plan, sector plan, right? So you're following this, this process here, right? We've, we've, we've done the planning. We've analyzed our area where we want to grow, we've set out where we want to grow, or we don't want to grow, whatever, the land uses we want there. Then you go through a comprehensive rezoning process. It might not touch every single parcel in your community. But it's designed to be one of those first implementation steps of growth in your community. Or, or implementation step of a comprehensive plan. The, the detail about the change, I have change of mistake. Again, a lawyer thing, but gets, how forgets a rezoning gets you past this like change of mistake rule. I'm, I'm not gonna get into the details on that, because it's beyond the scope of this presentation. But there is more in the Planning Commissioner Training Course and on our website about that. I'm probably not gonna, I was gonna read a lot from these, but I'm not going to do it anymore because of time. There are a few good examples here, I, I recommend Carroll County, because they give a really good explanation on their website. Of how their comprehensive rezoning is connected to their comprehensive plan. And that how one connect to the two, it's just, and I think they do, they, they did it as a way to communicate to the republic, and I think it's really well done. Baltimore County does it slightly different, they have this thing called the, sorry, we've had it for a while. The Comprehensive Zoning Map Process, or CZMP. Where they don't do comprehensive rezonings after each comprehensive plan, they do it on a four year rolling basis. The last one they did was in twenty twenty. They accept applications, inquiries for rezonings. But then they connect it closely to their comprehensive plans. It's a little different, but they've been successful with it, and it's well understood in their community. It's a process that's well, the process is established in their zoning code. So that is, that is how they, that's how they go about it, so there's different ways to do it. Alright, we're gonna look at zoning and growth, a couple of these concepts, concepts have already been mentioned here before. So we've looked at comprehensive plans, the connections to comprehensive plans, but so let's visualize residential density. We talked about three point five dwelling units per acre here for a while. It's one of the primary means of governing overall growth in the community is this residential, this residential density. So as we mentioned earlier, the, for the state purposes of smart growth and what we consider a growth area, a priority funding area. The density, residential density needs to be zoned for three point five dwelling units per acre. I can't tell you where that number came from. I think there was probably an analysis of the state back in the nineties when this bill passed, and they decided that that was an acceptable threshold, I don't know. I mean, we all know that residential density is a very contentious local issue, right? And people don't, yes, right, okay. But it's important to visualize what different dwelling unit acres or densities actually look like, alright? A lot of these are much more than three point five dwelling units per acre, but I think, you know, if it's proper design, subdivision. Connect, subdivision regulations process, connection to infrastr, supportive infrastructure, you know, it might not be as scary. No promises, obviously, but these are, these are tools that you could potentially use and discuss. And you know, I, I think a lot of people would be, really when you think about it, three point five dwelling units per acre is kind of on the lower end. I mean, I guess that's why it's the minimum threshold for priority funding areas, it's kind of the lower end of density. And if people, you really communicated this, you know, you get things like visual preference survey, surveys. Really being able to visualize what density looks like instead of just a number can help. Alright. So this is the Leonard Town, right? Yes, so two common means, so which zoning ordinance can govern residential density is through minimum lot area and dwelling units per acre, which we've discussed, and I know was mentioned earlier. Here's the Leonard Town zoning ordinance, you got minimum lot area there. Important number to remember is forty three thousand five hundred sixty square feet is one acre, right? So you'll see, if you're trying to convert from square feet to acreage, just make sure you keep that number in mind. So you see that number up here when we're looking at the RMF multifamily, I'm assuming zoning. The other one is maximum density units per acre, you know, down here at the bottom, you're getting just some commercial uses, so they don't have residential density there. Here, if you're looking at for Leonard Town, the residential multifamily, they use both, right? The minimum lot area would have to be one acre, but the maximum density units per acre is ten. So they have, they're kind of combining this, so if you want to do a multifamily development, you at least have one acre. And you can't go over ten dwelling units per acre on that one lot, or whatever, however many lots you have. Alright, so that's a pretty standard, common way to govern density. You're, you're rarely gonna achieve the density that is allowed through subdivision, you know, dedication of streets right of way. Environmental constraints, a lot of different reasons, but that's commonly one way to do it. If you're looking at, and I have more information about. About this in the appendix, but FAR floor area ratio is commonly used for commercial. Development, because obviously you don't have residential units for commercials, so how do you measure density for commercial uses? It's usually about building mass, height, size, that's, that you, you do that with. And one's through floor area ratio, it's a measurement of a building's floor area, all of the floors, right? You have the first floor, second floor, third floor, you add up all that square footage. In relation to the size of the lot parcel that the building is located on. So a one point zero FAR means you have the same number of square footage, footage of office building. As the square footage of the lot. And obviously you can keep on going high and keep on adding to that, more dense areas are gonna have FARs well above one point zero. It's often used in conjunction with developments, standards such as building heights, lot coverage and lot area to encourage a desired, a community's desired development. Alright, I'm not gonna read this slide to you, but it's important to keep in mind by right versus special exception. If you want uses and you want growth, you want by right. Also because by right doesn't get rid of the political process, that's too much, but it lessens the political process. Right, you, now the hard part about by right is getting it upfront. Right, when you're updating that zoning ordinance at the beginning, you've got to get things by right. So you gotta get, if you want, you want high density residential in a certain area. You want to get it by right, because as soon as you make it special exception, has to go through the Planning Commission, oftentimes the council. And that's when people come out to the public hearings and fight it. Alright, so if you want growth and you want uses, make them by right. I know it's not easy, wait, and definitely not that easy, but now, special exceptions have their purpose, right? It gives you more control over something, but it's gonna make it more expensive and harder to develop. Right, you add small, these special exception requirements on top of something that a small business owner wants to get an application for, they're not gonna be able to afford it. Because they have to go through that whole process and it becomes really pricey. Alright, I'm gonna go a little over my time, but not much. Zoning mechanisms and tools get complicated really, really fast, so I'm not gonna go over all these. Keep in mind cluster development, probably more common in the county perspective, but, right? You have one development up here, that's conventional subdivision down here, it's planned unit development clustered, same number of units. But if you cluster, you put them together, you have smaller lot size, there's less, less of a focus on lot size. And that, but you can preserve open space, public use space, I, for the people that live in that community, and oftentimes for the rest of your community. It is not, it's not only, sometimes it's the only way that you can actually achieve the density you want. Because there may be steep slopes, flood plains on that tract of land, that if you did the conventional subdivision at the top, you're not gonna be able to get them all. But down here, so the developer would probably like that. Sometimes you can add, you can have requirements of this, it can be done through the PUD process. Or you could even have incentives, that if somebody clustered, met certain clustering provisions, maybe they get a density bonus. Or if they make sure that they avoid certain environmental constraints or sensitive areas, they can get a density bonus. So it's one way to both promote growth. While at the same time preserving those characteristics for us, you were talking about forest conservation earlier, right? Here's a, there's, it's in the notes, you can find out more about the Charles County example here. But they specifically call out the fact that the desired density oftentimes is not gonna be able, you're not gonna be able to reach it unless you use clustering. Because of all those features. And here's just how they compare traditional development and cluster development, some of those key lot requirements. For the RL District Low Density Residential Zone. So you can see the distinction there, obviously big change in lot size, minimum tract size, there's not one for traditional development, but there is. And you got minimum open space, alright? Talked about inclusionary zoning briefly, I know that some MPDU, moderately priced dwelling unit programs. They all have different names across the country. But the idea is essentially, and we have examples on the Housing Element Models and Guidelines I sent you earlier. Annapolis, I'm sure Teresa's familiar with theirs, Montgomery County has inclusionary zones, they're all across the state. But the idea is that you either require a certain percentage of units to be affordable. Or you incentivize, sorry, a certain number to be affordable. Do you incentivize them, you know, you could, any number of things, you could provide more density, you could provide density bonuses. You could streamline the review process, or you can require it. Key thing to know about inclusionary zoning, it's more likely going to work, maybe only work in like higher demand, faster growing communities. Because. If a developer knows that they can make some money, they can definitely be, have a successful development, they're more likely to accept inclusionary zoning and not go to another community. Inclusionary zoning is probably not a revitalization strategy, although I'm sure I'm overgeneralizing there in their examples. But for faster growing communities, it can be an excellent way to encourage affordable housing and integrate it into the larger community, so it's not concentrated. It's key that there, there are income limits. And that you have to extend it for a certain number of years, income restrictions, so if somebody buys an MPDU, they have to sell it to somebody under a certain income level. Right, and that you also have, usually have requirements that it can't look any different than the other housing. You can't have all these like nice, big, beautiful townhomes, and then this one like small little townhome on the end, right? And everybody knows what it is, right? You, you've got, you know, those are usually the requirements. I have a whole bunch about, I know you specifically asked about form based codes, and I have a whole bunch in the back about form based codes. But I saw you're looking into it, but they, it's specifically, if you can, they focus on the form of the building, but less so than the use. Traditional zoning codes tend to go with the use first, is it commercial, is it residential? Whereas form, but form based codes will, you know, look, they'll put, usually set up different districts you're gonna talk about in your development or your downtown district. They'll usually look at the form of the district first, and, or the form of the building that they would like to see, and then use as a secondary consideration. It's still a consideration, but it's secondary. Form based codes can really help in areas like downtown where people, people that love LePlaters downtown or other communities downtown. Probably less concerned about whether or not this building is residential, or it's a restaurant, but that it looks like the rest of the town, right? So they're hard, they're complicated, they're not what your traditional zoning code, where you go to use tables and check off things. Takes a little bit more design review. But I have a link, the, there's the Congress of New Urbanism, if you've heard of them, tracks form based codes around the country. There aren't that many true ones that they would consider in Maryland, Aberdeen has one around their TOD, Bel Air has one as well. But that includes some more information, let me. PFAs, right? We, I know you're, probably a lot of you are familiar with this, the three criteria, locally designated growth area, plan for water and sewer and ten year plan, zoning. Minimum requirements, we haven't talked about smart growth, how you want all your things to align, that's how the state thinks about them. Same thing with PFAs, we want these three things, your comprehensive plan, water and sewer plan, and zoning ordinance to align. To communicate that you want to grow there, and then the, the state will concur that you want to grow there because you've done all these needed works, and then we'll. You'll get growth related funding, be it housing, water and sewer infrastructure, water capacity, I know it's very complicated, it's not just about being a PFA, but transportation, things like that. This, we have the map here, this is, this is a map of priority funding areas in Southern Maryland. The dark orange would be county PFAs, the yellow would be municipal PFAs. Water and sewer, a big one, nothing says you want to grow somewhere like running a sewer line to it. Because it makes, you can densify that, that land much, much more easily, especially with the septic tier map law, which was mentioned earlier. If you have a sewer line running to it, makes the area more marketable for developers, so. You know, if, if you really want to focus growth, put, run a sewer line to it, or if you want to restrict growth, don't run sewer to it. Capital improvement programs, I had a lot to say about these, but I'm gonna keep going. Essentially, it's, you know, this is, you, where, where are you targeting your capital investment? The local capital investment, both short term and the next budgeting period, but also long term. Focus it in your growth areas outside of your non-growth areas. Let me give a couple more minutes here, we're talking, so we're gonna get to infill design. Denton, where we did our last. Our last workshop last summer, developed this pattern book. And here's, this, they have a really good example of, you know, they did a, a really intense, long, public engagement process. That helped develop this pattern book, right? They just didn't have a designer come in and do it, like what do you love about Denton? What are the design components, what do you want to see in future development? They got that buy-in, at least from a number of people ahead of time, and then they added, they developed this. I want to say quickly, and then it's addressed in the zoning ordinance, but I encourage you to look at this, I think it's really well done. And Denton's a small town, it says specifically, the pattern book is intended to supplement existing applicable design guidelines. Persons proposing townhouses should consult the design pattern book and incorporate the design concepts and standards into the proposed townhouse. Design failure to adhere to the design principles set forth in the pattern book may be a basis for denial of the site plan by the town. So it actually has some teeth. And it connects the pad, the design with the zoning ordinance. But, you know, this is, again, and hopefully you get this buy-in, you have these design components, people, I mean, I know it's not a silver bullet, but people. It's the same with form based codes, might be more willing to accept that, that growth. Character survey, all this is, I'm saying here is that you should use your existing community to decide what you want. Your, your zoning ordinance, design guidelines to say, so many of our zoning ordinance these days only work in greenfield or suburban areas. And we try to reapply them in our downtowns, we can't. We can't get the same development that we have. Some five areas to look closely at, I'm going to end with parking policy before we take a break. So new parking was mentioned earlier, and it's always a big one. Five areas to look at when you're talking about infill, you're trying to promote growth in infill in your downtown, your core areas that may inhibit it. Your setbacks, we so commonly apply suburban, greenfield style setbacks to our urban areas, but the things that people so much like about Main Streets is how close the buildings are to the road. It's one of the main things, but our zoning ordinances don't allow that oftentimes. Height requirements, we have overly restrictive, tend to have overly restrictive height requirements in our downtowns, so that's something to keep in mind. Open space, we all love open space, but sometimes our Main Streets might not be the place that if you're going to require open space, these smaller lots on Main Street, you know, the developers are not going to be able to afford that, or they're not going to be able, they're not going to be able to afford it because they can't get in what they need to get into that land. So look closely at open space, lot size, we don't want to require too large a lot size, and then parking policy. All right, that's a big one. There's a good study, case study from Bel Air, it's the last thing I'll talk about. One of my, we all heard this, there's not enough parking downtown, not enough parking downtown, not enough parking. I mean, I think a lot of times people just don't like to parallel park, but maybe that's just my opinion. And they say, if there isn't, if there isn't a normal parking lot, then there's not enough parking downtown. But that's just my personal opinion. One of my former colleagues, she said this, and I'm sure she didn't, she didn't come up with this phrase, but I thought it's, it's important. It was a good phrase, like, the only thing worse than having a parking problem is not having a parking problem. Right? Because that means people aren't coming to your downtown. The parking problems aren't necessarily a bad thing, they're something you want to work with. Specifically, I'll just go through the details of what Bel Air has done. They wanted to intract more business, traditional uses to their downtowns, small business people, and they weren't getting it. So it's important to look at peak demand, right? When are uses being used? You could share lots like you're doing, like we're doing right here, right? The church doesn't need that lot during the week, so you can shared uses. Restaurants that have peak demand in the evening might not need as much surface parking, because the on-street parking will be more available, because people, the people that are working are at home, right? It's important to not plan for Black Friday, I'm sure many of you've heard this before, right? Like, does it make sense to plan for the one day of the year where parking is a real issue when having those requirements are going to prevent small businesses and the kind of uses you want to come in for being able to afford to develop, right? You might, and just think about what are the trade offs right there? You might have people complaining on Black Friday, but maybe it's worth it. I don't know, think about it. You can get a building, Bel Air did a building height bonus if somebody put in structured parking. Structured parking is very expensive, but it can eliminate, it can eliminate the need for a sea of surface parking. If somebody's willing to do it, maybe you get a bonus for doing that. They allowed it for a 15 spaces or less, it didn't have to be paved. So this helps with runoff and impervious surface, but it also makes it cheaper for smaller businesses. They could just do, not have it, have it paved. They added landscape requirements, and they, they got allies. It's always important, got allies. They had their local economic development groups, the Main Street groups, to say, this is what we need to do, because you can't go into that public hearing and say, with just a plan or saying we're going to reduce parking requirements. You need to recruit allies and have a reason for it. All right, I'm going to give you all a break. When we get back, my colleague, Sarah Deal, is going to talk about some of the work she's been doing, and Citizen Planning Academy is one way to potentially recruit allies. So I know we're behind, but we'll give you a 10 minute break, we'll be back at 3:05. Happy to answer any questions.